Let me welcome everyone to a regular scheduled meeting of the City of Morro Bay Planning Commission, Tuesday, October 15th, 2024. We're in the Veterans Memorial Building. Nice to see everybody. Let me say hello and we'll reintroduce ourselves so you remember us. I'd like to introduce the commissioners tonight. I'd like to start with Vice Chairperson Mike Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Commissioner Joseph Ingraffia, Commissioner Asia King, and Commissioner Eric Meyer. My name is Bill Roshan. I'm your chair for tonight. We have established a quorum and I'll call the meeting to order. With that, if we could have a moment of silence? Thank you all and pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America, the Constitution, and to the Constitution of Justice.
Let me say thank you for everybody who's here in person tonight and for everybody who's online. We're very happy to have you with us. And let me start. Commissioners, are there any announcements from any of us? Mike, can I start with you?
Yeah, sure. I just want to say something regarding Item C1. Thank you, staff, for bringing this forward to us. I think we asked almost two years ago to get an update regarding all the new laws that were being passed in California regarding housing. But I think it's really important and timely because two planning commissions were recently taken action against by the governor as well as Attorney General for not following state laws. In one case, in the case of Elk Grove, the planning commission said, "We denied it because it did not follow and breached our city standards." It breached our city standards. So we don't want to get caught up in that. So that's why we asked back then. They took action in 2022. They got sued in 2024 and they lost. So, you know, that was a settlement that was made between the Attorney General and the city. So we don't want to get caught up in that. That's why I'm glad this is happening now and we do have another slew of laws coming on the books as early as next year. So we need to get caught up on all that stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Others? Hearing none. Let me say thank you to Eirlen, Kim, and Susannah. Nice to have the staff with us tonight. And our next item is public comment. Invite anybody who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda. And Chris, is there anybody in the queue?
There are no raised hands in the queue.
Oh, Betty, hi.
Excuse me.
Welcome.
Thank you. Betty Winholz, I would just like to announce that on Sunday, this coming Sunday, October 20th, at the Community Center, from 2:00 to 3:00, just for one hour, there will be a Q&amp;A for people that have still questions about A24. And everyone's welcome. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that, Betty. No one else? With that, I will close public comments. And I'll go to the consent calendar. Commissioners, any comments or questions on the approval of minutes? Eric?
Some of us were absent, so they need to be made in separate motions.
We don't have to do that, but we could.
On the one that we did hold, I think, Joe, they did add your language. You wanted some language added to the motion. It's redlined. So if you approve it, then if you make a motion to approve, there was Asia and Joe and myself were at that meeting. So we can approve it now.
How's the June 4th meeting?
No, that was the, I can't remember which meeting, but it was the one where me, you, and Joe were in attendance. But Bill and Eric were not. So, but the changes were made as requested. That are-
I certainly read the provision. I didn't, that's what I said.
So, no adjustments, Joe?
No.
Asia, any comments?
Um, no.
So I would make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'd make the motion to approve those minutes.
Okay. Second?
Just for clarity, I'd say you're approving-
We're gonna do-
You're doing A3 first?
Yeah, we're doing the June 4th meeting first.
Okay, the June 4th is A2. That's a different meeting.
That's the one that they just made the motion-
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
It's our second, so.
Okay, thank you. Would you pull the commission?
I suppose I can do that.
Thank you, Kim.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingraffia?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
I have to abstain.
Oh, that's right.
Yes.
Okay.
And I abstain.
And you are abstaining.
Do I have a motion or comments on August 6th?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Would you pull the commission again, Kim?
Sure. Commissioner Ingraffia?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner King.
I think I have to abstain from this because I wasn't there.
Okay. Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rodriguez?
Yes.
Chair Roshan?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, just for the record, on the August 6th minute, it was brought to our attention that Jeff Eckles' name was spelled incorrectly in those minutes, so we'll make sure that it's spelled correctly in the final minutes that are published today.
Thank you. Thanks for catching that. Hi, Jeff. With that, we have no public hearing tonight. There are no projects on tonight's agenda. And I would like to make the comment, one reason we have not been having many meetings is there haven't been that many projects being brought to the commission. And in part, Eirlen, that's because of the change in the zoning code?
So that's correct. I did plan to provide a brief report on that during the planning director updates at the end of the agenda. But that's essentially the situation with the comprehensive zoning code update that went into effect in March. It was successful in meeting the goal of streamlining permit process for smaller types of development projects that previously came to the planning commission for approval and now are approved on my desk at the director level.
Just wanted to get that on the record for the public. And we will address it maybe in more depth with future agenda items on Item E. With that, I think we can go right to new business. And Eirlen, you're on, and thank you very much for doing this report tonight.
Anybody that wants to say anything in the public?
About what?
About anything.
We already did it.
Oh, okay. I just want to make sure. Yeah.
So, a big thank you for doing this. As Mike had suggested, we're excited that it's taken a while to get here, but this is an important item for Morro Bay, for the state. And thank you so much for finally doing it. And we're hoping this is the first of maybe a series of items on housing around the issues here in Morro Bay. With that, Eirlen, thank you.
Yes, so, good evening, Commission. My name is Eirlen Seawall, Community Development Director, and I'm joined by Planning Manager Kim Fowler and Susannah Tonner, Assistant Planner. So I'm going to start off the presentation this evening, and then Susannah Tonner is going to provide additional information regarding the state housing laws. I do want to use this as an opportunity to point out that Susannah Tonner is the City of Morro Bay's delegate to the Housing Action Team, which is a team of planners from each of the eight jurisdictions and SLOCOG. So it's SLOCOG, representative from the county, and each of the seven cities, and they meet monthly to discuss regional housing issues. So I'm going to start off with, I have a PowerPoint here. So, the commission did provide a direction for staff to provide a series of housing discussions. This is actually the second of the series. On April 16th, the department, before I arrived, I'm at the department, the department gave a presentation on the city's regional housing needs allocation and the city's progress in achieving those goals. Since it's been some time since that last presentation and since the city's arena progress, I think, really sets the stage for this discussion, I am providing some additional information on the arena and our progress. So this is a bit of a repeat from the April 16th discussion, but I think, again, it provides that important context. So, the slide here shows the city's sixth cycle housing element, regional housing needs allocation. So the sixth cycle housing elements covers 2020 through 2028. Even though it is an eight-year planning horizon on the housing element, it's actually a 10-year arena cycle, which is confusing, but I think it's important to point that out. You can see here, as of our 2023 Annual Housing Element Progress Report, this is how the city's done in meeting those housing goals at the various income levels. So, again, it's a 10-year arena cycle, and 2023 was completion of Gear 5, so 50% the way through the 10-year arena cycle. So, if the city were, you know, perfectly on track, you have straight line, projection of meeting our arena target, so you'd be at 50% in each of the income levels here. You can see this last column is percent arena achieved as of the 2023 city's Housing Element Progress Report, so it doesn't include any of the permits from this year. That'll be reported to the state in April of 2025. We'll include the 2024 data. You can see the bottom line here is, if you look at, all of the income levels were at about 32%, but if you look at some of the lower income levels, especially actually the moderate income level, only 9% of the arena has been accomplished so far. So, the way we're able to count units towards these arena numbers, there's a few different ways. So, we have sometimes deed-restricted affordable housing projects, which are oftentimes proposed or almost always proposed by nonprofit housing developers who are able to use state and federal tax credits and grants and other funding opportunities to provide 100% deed-restricted affordable housing. Those projects typically are rental units. And the most recent example is the Rock View Sunset project developed by Haslow. I think that provided 35 units at the low and very low income level. For a lot of jurisdictions, those 100% affordable nonprofit projects tend to provide a large percentage of their arena. Another major contributor to the city's arena is actually accessory dwelling units. So, the city was part of a market study that showed that, on average, an accessory dwelling unit will be affordable at the low-income level if it's less than 500 square feet and at the moderate-income level if it's over 500 square feet. So, based on that market study, even without deed restrictions, we're able to count EDUs towards accomplishing arena at the low and moderate income levels. So this slide here, I know it's very difficult, if not impossible, for you to see from up there on the dais, but this is an exhibit from our housing element, and it is a map, one for North Morro Bay, the other for South Morro Bay, identifying the sites inventory that was included in the housing element. So when we prepare a housing element, we have to conduct a sites inventory to show the state that the city has enough sites zoned for housing in order to accomplish arena goals. And we can discuss this more if the commission has questions. So now I'm going to pass it over to Susannah Tonner to give a presentation on the state housing laws, that first, the ones that have been adopted and that the city is currently implementing to streamline housing development. And then Susannah will also speak to pending state housing laws to also streamline housing development.
Thank you, Eirlen. Good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. Thank you for having me. The first set of laws that I'm going to go over are the state ADU laws, ADU accessory dwelling unit. Accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units are independent dwelling units that are accessory to a primary home in originally single-family zones or districts, but now they've expanded to multifamily and commercially zoned districts. So, in the past year, the city has issued 17 building permits for ADUs and JADUs within the city. These have gone through the coastal development permit process and the building permit process. Because Morro Bay is within the coastal zone, all ADUs are required to receive an administrative coastal development permit, which is ministerial, before going through the building permit process. The city is, just as a highlight, the city is also launching a pre-designed ADU program to help property owners with the design of detached ADUs. These plans will provide, just like the building footprint and outline and floor plan for detached units. The next Senate bill that we'll be going over is Senate Bill 9, or SB 9, for urban lots splits and urban dwelling units. SB 9 allows for the ministerial approval of up to, can be up to four units and one subdivision of a single-family parcel. So this on the screen is just kind of a breakdown table of different projects that can happen under SB 9. It can either be just an additional dwelling unit and ADU, or it can include a parcel map, a ministerial parcel map for the division of one single-family parcel. The next Senate bill is Senate Bill 684. This Senate bill just went into effect July 1st of 2024, and there are updates coming in July of 2025 that I'll talk about later. This is for ministerial map and development review. Right now, Senate Bill 684 is for parcels zoned for multifamily residential, so our RM and RH zones. This allows for the ministerial approval of up to 10 units. Sorry, I have one minute. Of up to 10 units, the bill also provides relief for some development standards, like our minimum lot size and some interior setback development standards. The opportunities and constraints for this bill are, it's a great opportunity to streamline. Right now, our parcel maps, the process for them is review and approval by planning commission, but the Senate bill allows for ministerial approval. So no public hearing would need to be held for a project under 684. A constraint would be there's no exception to any of the regulations that 684 does not provide for. So, under our zoning code, our director and, of course, planning commission, they have some discretion with projects and can allow for some modifications, but projects under 684 must meet all development standards that 684 doesn't provide allowances for. And this isn't really a constraint, but maybe something more to keep in mind. If a site is identified as an opportunity site in our housing element, from the map that Eirlen showed a couple slides ago, projects under 684, they must meet the number of dwelling units as identified in that opportunity site map. And if the opportunity map provided a level of affordability, the project would also have to meet those affordable units. This one's going to go back to Eirlen. He has some firsthand experience with SB 330.
So, the city has not yet received an SB 330 project, but I do have experience from a past jurisdiction working on a project that was processed under SB 330, also known as the Housing Crisis Act. So the way SB 330 works is it establishes a requirement for a pre-application process where a developer can submit a preapplication to the jurisdiction claiming that the project is an SB 330 development project. The jurisdiction would review that preapplication and verify that it meets the requirements to be processed under SB 330. The primary requirement is that it's an eligible housing development project. There is a pretty general definition for an eligible housing development project. Essentially, it's a project that provides 100% residential development or a mixed-use project that was at least 2/3 of the square footage designated to residential use. Once the jurisdiction approves that preapplication verifying that the project is indeed an eligible SB 330 project, the developer then has 180 days to submit their formal development application. And the project becomes actually vested in to the ordinances and fees that were in place at time of their SB 330 preapplication. What SB 330 does is it provides certain benefits to the developer as the project is processed. So, it's different than SB 9 and 684 that Susannah was just describing in that it doesn't qualify a project for ministerial approval. The project still has to go through the regular discretionary permit process, but it does provide certain protections for that project. Namely, it limits the number of public hearings that can be held on the project to five public hearings. Again, it will allow vesting into certain fees and ordinance standards at the time of that preapplication. And third is it creates a more narrow standard of review to deny the project. So, the only justification for denying an SB 330 project has to be a finding of specific adverse environmental or public health and safety impacts. And that's SB 330. So, I want to explain to you, my past experience with SB 330 projects was not in the coastal zone, and I imagine there's a fairly complex legal analysis regarding, you know, how all of that would apply in the coastal zone. There could be additional nuances for SB 330 project in the coastal zone. And I'll pass it back over to Susannah.
The next bill we're going to be going over is Assembly Bill 2011. AB 2011 establishes different eligibility for 100% affordable residential and mixed-use development projects along commercial corridors that can allow for that density and increased transit usage. Projects under AB 2011 are subject to ministerial approval, so unlike SB 330, it would be ministerial approval, so all staff level. Something cool I wanted to point out about AB 2011 was, projects approved under AB 2011 would provide fair wages and health benefits to any construction workers working on the So those were the currently in effect in the coastal zone Assembly and Senate bills that we wanted to go over tonight. I'm going to speak about a couple upcoming legislation items. So, SB 1211 is an ADU revision law that's already been signed and it will go into effect, or signed by the governor, and it will go into effect July 2025. This one's a bit of a bigger change to ADU law right now, under ADU law, multifamily parcels, so parcels with three or more dwelling units. They can have two detached ADUs. In July, starting July 2025, they can have up to eight detached ADUs. There is a caveat with that. They're limited to the number of primary dwelling units on the property. So I think in the staff report, I laid out an example. If a multifamily parcel has five primary dwelling units, they could only have, they would have a maximum of five detached ADUs. They wouldn't be able to go up to the eight. The next one is SB 1123. It's a revision to SB 684, which I just touched on. So this will go into effect July 2025. The difference, or the update to this is, the laws under SB 684 will be applicable to vacant, single-family parcels. So parcels in RL, RSA, and RSB zones, in addition to the RM and RH zones. So vacant, single-family parcels, five acres or less, up to 10 units could be approved ministerially. And the subdivision of those units, subdivision of the parcel could be approved ministerially. And again, it would be subject to our local arena numbers and everything in the opportunity sites map. There is a couple differences between the allowances for new parcels in the multifamily zones and the single-family parcels. So multifamily parcels, their minimum lot size would be 600 square feet. Under SB 1123, the minimum lot size for single-family parcels is 1,200 square feet. So a little bit bigger for the single-family parcels. Okay, the AB 2560 is a density bonus law revision. This has not been passed, it has not been signed, but it is something that's potentially upcoming. It would apply all density bonus legislation within the coastal zone. The amended, the original version of the bill was just all density bonus laws needed to be applied fully in the coastal zone. An amended version of the bill requires by July 2026, any local government in the coastal zone must have been an LCP amendment that harmonizes density bonus law and the California Coastal Act. Our, since we just recently updated our zoning code and LCP, a lot of that has been incorporated into our new LCP and zoning code, but any future legislation would have to be incorporated. So that is all the legislation we'll go over. We do have some pipeline projects we just wanted to hit, and they're Kim's projects. So, Kim will speak to them a little.
Can we go through questions perhaps on, or how do you want to do it?
Well, let's, I was thinking that, and before I turn it over to the commissioners, I wanted to ask a couple of overview questions. So, the, all the state bills you just went through, we believe at this time, all the ones that are active, apply to Morro Bay. All the bills you just reviewed are applicable here?
Yes, there are a lot more, a whole slew of bills, but we narrowed it down to the ones applicable in Morro Bay.
And if we were looking to get a sense of the locations of the applicability, do we have, would we be able to link that to a zoning map? How best to do that?
So, ADUs are applicable in all zones. SB 9 is for single-family zones, so our RL, RSA, and RSB districts.
And that was which one again?
SB 9-
Okay.
-was the urban lots split and urban dwelling.
So that's any single-family?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And SB 684, as it stands right now, is limited to multifamily zoned parcels, so our RM and RH zones. Again, July 2025, it'll be expanded into basically all our residential zones. SB 330, is that limited?
I think any housing development project could submit under SB 330. It's an SB 330 project.
And I believe for AB 2011, 100% affordable and 100% residential projects would be applicable in any zone, but if they wanted to do residential and mixed use, it would be limited to commercial corridors that could handle the additional density and transit needs.
And I would just add, SB 684 only applies on multifamily zone parcels up to five acres, so that would further limit the applicability throughout the city.
And Chair Roshan, can I ask a follow-up? Go ahead. If you're not, go ahead.
So, the other thing I did want to ask, at this point in terms of an overview, do we have an inventory list of deed-restricted housing, not just in the last year, but for the long haul? Do we know the total number of ADUs that have been permitted and built? Do we have any kind of a list? Does the city understand what our affordability inventory looks like?
For ADUs, I don't think we have a list right now. That's something, so with our ADUs, they need CD, both coastal development permits and building permits. So, the ones that are permitted under the coastal development permit and building permit kind of vary, but we can get those numbers from our records. But I don't know that we have, like, an exact number ready for you right now.
And as far as deed-restricted affordable housing, so our 2020-2028 Housing Element update, I can't say that it has, you know, 100% comprehensive list, but I know it does identify deed-restricted affordable housing. One of the requirements of the housing element is to identify deed-restricted housing that's at risk of converting to market rate. So there's a table in the housing element identifying the kind of key deed-restricted housing projects in the city for that purpose.
Got it. Thank you. And if you were to give us just another brief idea, you know, the state bills are applicable to the state, right? What's, this is a relatively recent phenomenon, 20 years old, that they've been doing density bonus laws longer?
That sounds about right. I don't, yeah, I don't have those timeframes in front of me, but that, just anecdotally, I feel like I, you know, as a planner, over the last 20 years, I feel like density bonus ordinance has been a discussion since I started 20 years ago.
And can you just give us a reason why the state's doing this? We have a housing crisis? Can you kind of explain it to us a little bit statewide? And then if you can tie it to Morro Bay, that would be good.
Sure. So, yes, these housing laws are just about all, you know, predicated on the state's housing- So yes, these housing laws are just about all predicated on the state's housing crisis, and particularly the limited housing supply statewide. And the intent is to increase housing units across the state by streamlining the approval process for housing development. As far as bringing it down to the Morro Bay level, we are a small city, mostly built out, you know, rather constrained in terms of inventory of vacant sites for new housing development. And, you know, I think ADU laws in particular, it's created a real opportunity to increase local housing supply. And again, we've done market studies, you know, to show that ADUs do, on average, tend to be more affordable, and it's a way to increase housing supply that's in scale with the character of Morro Bay.
And just so we hear it from you, Mike raised it earlier, what's the state of the art of all of these state bills? In other words, they're being contested some places. Do you have a kind of a current temperature of what's going on in other cities? Are we seeing lots of projects? Do you have any kind of read on how successful the state bills are?
I'll start off with my current read, and then maybe Kim or Susanna would like to add. I think over the last 20 years or so, I've seen the state get more aggressive in the laws, you know, taking away some local control and, like we heard in the presentation, requiring certain development projects to be approved ministerially through the streamlined process. When I first learned of SB 684 allowing up to 10 multifamily units and a 10 lot subdivision strictly through a ministerial process without any discretionary review, no public hearing, no CEQA, I was surprised that the state had been so aggressive in that legislation. So it's been really stepping up. I think also just at a high level, it has, I've seen some data to show that's really been successful in increasing housing supply across the state. I don't have any numbers for you on that right now, but just based on articles I've read, there has been success in freeing up housing supply across the state.
Great, thank you. Kim, Susanna, do you want to add anything?
Oh, sure. I'll add a few notes. My read is that the state's done a very good job of progressing various different Senate bills and Assembly bills to increase housing supply. The reality, though, for Morro Bay is that because we are a coastal town, there are many bills that don't apply in the coastal zone. So there are many more bills than what we discussed tonight, but they're not applicable to Morro Bay.
But we think that the ones you presented tonight are?
Correct. So narrowing it down to the ones that are applicable in Morro Bay, once you dive deeper into these bills, yes, on paper, they're here to help support additional housing, higher density, et cetera, et cetera. But what we're seeing, and my take on this, is that it's not as easy to apply these bills into specific projects within Morro Bay for the reasons that Eirlin just identified. There's, you know, we are a city that is so built out, and there are so few development opportunities for undeveloped land. So for example, if somebody wanted to exercise Senate Bill 684 and say, I want XYZ, it's really hard to find a property that will accommodate XYZ. And so, yeah, SB 684 exists on paper, but the reality is, how many parcels do we have in the city that someone can actually use that to their benefit? So it's a little bit more difficult than just applying all of these Senate bills. I think the reality is a little bit more difficult.
Got it. That's the reality. Susanna, do you want to add? So the last overview I have is, how does this, we have an inclusionary zoning ordinance here in Morro Bay. How does that resolve with the state projects? In other words, they qualify if there's a certain percentage of affordable. Is that independent of our inclusionary ordinance? Is it above and beyond?
You gave me a heads up that you might ask this question. And I did discuss it with my team. I'm not sure if we were able to get to the bottom of it, but maybe just kind of start by just rephrasing the question, at least as I understand it. So the city does have an inclusionary housing ordinance that requires new housing development projects to set aside a percentage of the units at prices or rent levels that are affordable to lower moderate income households. We also have laws such as state density bonus law and our local density bonus ordinance that provides density bonuses and zoning concessions for projects that provide a certain level of affordable housing. If a developer can, I think, you know, the question is, can a developer count those affordable units to meet the density bonus requirement to also satisfy their inclusionary housing requirement? And again, I don't know if Kim has an answer to that, but my thought on it is that, let's say a developer does propose to use a density bonus ordinance, and that means they're going to actually have to construct affordable units. With the inclusionary housing ordinance, they're able, a developer can pay in Lufi, and that in Lufi is a very small amount compared to the cost of developing. So if we get a developer to actually build units under the density bonus ordinance instead of just paying in Lufi, that is still a win as far as affordable housing goes.
So that's the major difference, but it's probably one or the other. It's not a, you know, they don't merge, right? The inclusionary with the state bills.
That's what I'd want to do some more research on before I answered.
Got it, got it. Kim?
At the staff level, I believe we started to spitball this one night, and I think the dialogue digressed to somewhere else before we finished. So we'll pick that up and report back to you.
I love it. So Joe, can we start with you?
Can I open to?
Can I just, only because this is relevant, and we're talking about it now, I just don't want to jump on another topic.
Mike?
Okay, so good. I call this the Elk Grove bill. They sued Elk Grove because they didn't do something. There's a bill called SB 1037, and it says allows the state officials to impose new fines in cities that fail to greenlight new housing projects, especially affordable housing ones. And it was approved, you know, moving forward. So in other words, that's SB 1037. That applies to all cities that don't approve housing, especially affordable housing. So I'm just pointing that out. You said these bills were comprehensive, right? This applies to all cities that don't greenlight housing. So do you have an answer regarding whether that law applies? And, you know, because they can start that, that's the Elk Grove bill. That came out of suing Elk Grove because they didn't do it. So now they can just do it because a law was passed to do it. So these were part of the 32 laws that passed in this current session.
So you just mentioned 32 laws that passed in the current session. So it can be difficult to keep up with all the state housing laws. There are so many happening so quickly, and we really do our best and prioritize the ones that have an immediate impact on us. We'll make sure to kind of take notes on that one, and maybe at a future planning commission meeting.
And the only reason I'm bringing it up, and I thought it was timely, is because Elk Grove got sued. The Attorney General won because they didn't build the kind of housing that the Attorney General and the Governor wanted to see. And to answer the Chair's question, Governor Newsom made it a priority to build 3 million homes when he became governor. So that's where it's all coming from. You know, he has a desire and a will, as we've seen with all these new laws, to build 3 million new homes in California. When he first started, he's in the last two years of his governorship, so he does want to get this done. I'm just bringing, shedding some more light where all these bills are coming from. He gets, you know, he picks authors on the Senate side and the Assembly side, brings them together, they agree on a bill, they have it signed. It's as easy as that, and the Governor approves it. So I'm just telling that that's where a lot of the pressure is coming from, the Governor's office.
Great. Joe?
Yeah, I do have a question. I'm trying to get a better understanding of the Senate Bill 684. So if I'm a typical lot owner with a 6,000 square foot lot, ministerially, I can present a project that will allow five units, each 1,200 square feet on my 6,000 square foot lot. Is that, am I correct in that?
Not necessarily. I think we need a little bit more data.
Well, my next, and the other question was, because it strikes me, is that I probably wouldn't be allowed to do that. What would be the constraints?
So the benefit, so different bills have different benefits. So the benefit specifically of Senate Bill 684 is that a prospective applicant can bypass, not bypass, but not be subject to a discretionary level review. So his application packet would be reviewed and looked at by staff and approved ministerially if it checks all the boxes. So that's what 684 says. So if you have, if an applicant has a development proposal with, let's say, attached or detached homes, and maybe he wants to sell the homes instead of rent them out, there would have to be a parcel map or some sort of lot split. Typically, that goes through a planning commission type of review. Under 684, you don't have to do that. So it's, the benefit to the applicant is that he's saving a lot of time and time is money in order to get the entitlement for those residential units. The drawback to 684 is that that same applicant would have to find a piece of property that would work for what he's looking to do. So 684 saves you time, but it does not get you out of development standards that would be, that anybody would be subject to. So for example, if a piece of property was zoned residential medium, and the city's, the city zoning code says residential medium is 7.4 to 7, what is it, 4 to, hang on.
7.1 to 15 dwelling units per acre.
Yes, thank you, Susanna. If residential medium is 7.1 to 15 dwelling units per acre, the applicant would have to do the math to see if he could make a project pencil with those densities identified. So it's not, it's not an automatic green light to just...
Before we leave this question with Joe, so it's ministerial review?
It's ministerial review.
But what is staff's discretion limited to?
There is no discretion. That's the other side of it, is someone can invoke 684 to get through a project timeline quicker, but the caveat is, you don't get to bypass any of the development standards, objective development standards that are set in place.
You got it. I'm glad you said that. They're the objective design standards that Morro Bay adopted.
Correct.
That's what we're talking about. That's why it's administrative.
Right. And the whole purpose of having objective design standards is to go through, go through the sentences and check the boxes. And from a ministerial level, if all the boxes can be checked, staff would have to ministerially decide that the project...
Got it. Thank you. Joe, were you done with that question?
I hope that helps.
Yeah, it did. Yeah. Asia?
Can you talk about what you're talking about with 684 and 1123? And how, like, could you talk about it in terms of, like Joe said, if I'm a homeowner or a parcel owner, I've got a 6,000 square foot lot, what does that mean? And I'm zoned, single family? What could that look like? I know you need a lot more data, but...
So the beauty of the housing element is that there are opportunity sites that are already listed. So the first thing to check would be to see if that particular parcel is even discussed in the housing element. And if so, there would be a column in the housing element that already gives you the cheat sheet of, somebody's done the math and figured out how many realistic dwelling units can be achieved on a particular parcel that's listed as an opportunity site. Does that help?
I mean, I think I got another thing. I was just thinking, like, okay, we have these parcels that are privately owned parcels identified in our housing element as opportunity sites, and many of them...
They don't have to be identified, right?
They don't. And so let me reframe it this way. Let's say there's a vacant lot in Morro Bay that somebody's looking at potentially developing. 684 doesn't change what you can do there, it just changes how quickly you can do it.
And then 1123 just applies the same process, but in single-family zone.
I'm going to turn Susanna for this one.
Yes.
Thank you.
And 684 does give some concessions to development standards, like, right now, our minimum lot size for residential zones is 5,000 square feet. 684 would allow for, in multifamily zones, for a 600 square foot lot, and in single-family zones for a 1,200 square foot lot.
You mean per unit, per built unit?
Yes, when they subdivide, the new parcel size would be 600 square feet, or could be 600 square feet to 1,200 square feet, depending on the zone.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Asia?
I mean, I have like a million questions, but I think when you talk, yeah, when you talk about your stuff, I think...
Again, with respect to that 1,200 square foot lot after the division, that's only if our current standards in one of those opportunity zones would allow that. And the likelihood is that there are very few current properties that would allow something that small.
Correct. And that's the reality of the issue, is the bills are available to us, but applying them is a little bit more tricky.
Got it. So we're still in the question round, then we'll do comments after public comment?
If I can clarify really quick, so SB 684 does allow for up to 10, like a 10-unit split, but that doesn't mean that every parcel gets 10 units. They still have to meet their density. So throwing numbers, a one-acre parcel, vacant parcel in an RM zone, they would, they could have up to 10, but they don't automatically, they would have to meet their density restrictions. They don't automatically get all 10.
So I'll start here now. Save this one, and then I'm going to ask the real deal questions, okay? Are developers in a better place today than they were two years ago? Now put that on the side, just put that in the back of your mind, we're going to answer that eventually. Now let's get down to the real questions for Morro Bay. Okay, so we have objective design standards that we adopted in March 2024. Will those objective design standards have to be amended based upon the laws that were passed prior or currently? Will they have to be amended? Because you're going to be doing a lot of ministerial approvals, right? So we want to make sure that our standards are meeting, or at least the laws that are being passed, in order to avoid being sued or taken to court.
So in the updated zoning code, wanting to affect March 2024, it does include the objective design standards, and that chapter of the zoning code lists out specific state laws that streamline housing through ministerial process where those objective design standards can be applied per the zoning code. There's also a catch-all that essentially says, and similar state laws. Now, with that said, as we discussed earlier, this is something that's constantly evolving, and the, there have been instances, not necessarily in Morro Bay, where objective design standards have made it difficult for some of these projects to move forward under state law, and so the state is kind of figuring that out. And there's now some questions as to whether jurisdictions can apply objective design standards, for example, to an SB 9 project, and there's an open question on can we apply them to a 684 project. So it's really an evolving discussion.
So Eirlin, you're saying, could the objective design standards be applied at all?
I would say it can be applied to the, to projects processed under the specific state laws listed in the zoning code. As far as SB 9 and 684, this is something that Susanna and I recently discussed, and that came up at one of those housing action team meetings, that there's, there are opinions out there that they can't be applied.
Interesting.
And that's why I asked that, because the city of San Jose still has not adopted objective design standards, but it's far exceeding its housing goals, and the Governor likes that. Get it? So if you're sitting, you're doing well, San Jose's the number one destination in the world, it's building more houses, housing than anywhere else in California. So if you're doing your job that way, you know what I mean? You don't need objective design standards, because they're, but what I'm trying to really get at from Morro Bay is the fact that we have standards, our own standards, you know, that we'd like to apply, right? We're not San Jose. San Jose's building skyscrapers.
So we're still in question?
Yeah, yeah. So the question is, will we be amending our objective design standards as part of the slew of prior laws or current laws coming? Will we be amending those? Or are we just going to leave them alone? Because you're applying them when the commission should be, in the past... Because you're applying them when, when the commission should re, in the past, the commission reviewed those. Now, you're just saying, we've got standards, you don't need to do anything.
So, I think the question isn't so much, can we, or should we amend our zoning code to apply objective design standards to other state housing laws? I think the question is whether that's going to be permissible under state law for us to do that.
Okay.
Just again, so I understand this. So, there's a credible legal argument out there that communities like Morro Bay cannot have design standards with respect to 684, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, I don't have it on me right now. I think the discussion is for SB 9 projects, and we're operating under the assumption that SB 684 would have the same standards because of how similar they are. SB 9 projects, objective design standards that aren't applied citywide to all housing projects, if there are, like, we have objective design standards for specific projects under specific bills, those objective design standards are not applicable to SB 9. The only development standards applicable to SB 9 are the ones applicable citywide.
So, my other question then, because I want to ask those, because those are very important, because we've delegated that role to you administratively. The Planning Commission used to be that, that review. So, the other one would be our housing element. Will we be amending our housing element in order to meet some of those very ambitious goals regarding affordable housing? Because we can do more with ADUs, I mean, will there be a need to do that as well, our housing element, based upon the slew of laws that have passed and the ones that are coming? Will we be doing that?
We will during the next housing element cycle. We wouldn't want to amend our, our housing element on our, on our own, is that, you know, a lengthy process where it would have to be certified by the state housing and community development department, so.
Yeah, and that's really important, because affordable housing is by far the, the driver here. And we got a memo from one of our, our past chair regarding this, you know, she wrote a great write-up on how can we achieve more of the affordable housing goals that we want to achieve. So, thank you very much, Susan, for bringing that. But that's it for now. But remember that question about developers, are they going to be looking at Morro Bay more or less based upon these laws?
Eric, questions of staff?
A couple. With respect to SB 9, SB 684, and I guess 1123 also, or maybe specifically 1123, you were talking about vacant parcels. Would that mean that a person, is, so vacant parcel, I understand what it is, but I mean, but there's a, a risk reward to tearing down a house, and in some cases, tearing down a house creates a vacant parcel, right? Why does it only apply to vacant parcels, I guess is what I'm asking.
Well, it doesn't, does it?
1123 applies to vacant parcels, and then, sorry, what's the?
That's essential, that's essentially my question. So, 1123 allows a person with a vacant parcel, but it would seem like if you had a 20,000 square foot parcel with a house over in one corner, that's not, that's not, 1123 doesn't apply to that one, it only applies to a vacant parcel?
Yeah, only vacant parcels for single family.
But if you tore that house down in the corner, then it would apply?
I'm not-
Counterintuitive is what I'm trying to bring it up.
Yeah, I'm not too sure how demolishing a unit would come into play.
Yeah, can you help me with that? Why can't you demo a house and?
If you're looking to, if you had the lot that would, would work for, let's say, the 10 units-
Yeah.
But there happens to be a house in the corner, it's in the way, three of them, and you tear that house down, then suddenly, suddenly it's applicable, 1123 is applicable, whereas if you have the house there, it doesn't sound like-
But there's no reason you couldn't do that, is there?
I would imagine that the state legislature kind of anticipated that scenario when it was drafted, and there may be something in the, the fine print of the bill that, that explains that, you know-
Interesting.
What the case would be there, but we're, we don't have that information right now.
A lot of the legislation says stuff like, unit for unit has to be replaced, I don't know about this one specifically, but that there's like a provision that the number of units has to be salvaged.
Mostly, I'm just curious why the word vacant was in there, because it doesn't mean to be adding any value.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great question, yeah.
And in some cases, might actually tear down affordable housing to create more, less affordable housing.
I mean, that's the reason it would be in there.
That's what happened in many cases. So, that's kind of a question we don't have an answer to, really. The other question is, in Morro Bay, there's, there are some homes which have a, an accessory dwelling unit which is used as a, as a short-term vacation rental. And I don't know how those exactly are permitted, because I've never been through that process here, but it would seem that by, in a location, a coastal location like Pismo or Cambria or Morro Bay or Avala, et cetera, that, that the addition of the ADU or the junior ADU would be, would be not so much another house for, or could potentially be just another vacation rental. And so, it would seem like we might want to consider, or is there a method by which we can protect those ADUs for longer-term uses and not vacation rental uses? Any comments about that?
So, that's an easy one. So, state law, as well as the city's zoning code prohibits the use of an ADU as a short-term rental.
Okay, so that's, and the state law, okay. I, okay, so those existing ones that exist now, do they predate some new law? Because there are existing ADUs in town that are secondary dwelling units, maybe they're not accessory dwelling units, but they're a secondary dwelling unit used as, is that the differentiation?
So, this could be an opportunity to plug our short-term rental ordinance implementation efforts. So, beginning January 1st, per our short-term rental ordinance, we're going to require all existing permitted short-term rentals in Morro Bay to apply for a renewal permit. And as part of that renewal permit process, we're going to verify that they meet all of the requirements of the code, and if we find that one is an ADU, they're not going to be able to renew, and therefore they'll have to cease operation.
Eric, other questions?
You have, you have answered many people's questions, thank you very much. The last one is not so much a question, as a comment, and so I'll save it for later.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Chair, Susanna, because you're handling this. What do you see as the opportunity, you know, I think our leadership in Morro Bay has decided that a regional approach to meeting a lot of these housing goals and objectives is probably better than a city of Morro Bay approach alone. So, what is that opportunity you see, since you're sitting on that body? Have you guys gotten together, will you get together to talk about how to meet these very tough laws?
So, yeah, I'm on the Housing Action Team, I'm Morro Bay's delegate, I suppose. So, we meet monthly, we discuss all the state laws, it's, it's a lot of roundtable discussion about how to apply them, when to apply them, different nuances with them, like, if, say, a project came into Morro Bay for, I don't know, a 684 project, we have, and we haven't done in a 684 project, but Atascadero has, like, it's a lot of back and forth about streamlining and how the process goes. So, right now, that's the main goal of our, our Housing Action Team, along with Slow Cog, I know they're putting forth a bunch of-
So, may I ask to get clarity? So, your main mission as part of that group is for information?
It's a lot of information back and forth, yeah.
Do you ever shape policy, that group?
I'm not sure that we're shaping, we'll talk about county-wide efforts and implementation, but not like our own policies. It's a lot of implementation of policies coming down from the state.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, if we, oh, yeah, Eric, please.
One last quickie. With respect to the various normal subdivision regulations, like Public Works would, would require, you know, curbs in gutter, for instance, or sidewalk, are, are any of these 684, SB 9, et cetera, do they preclude, or do those subdivision requirements still stand, or?
The subdivision requirements from the Public Works Department still stand, and they cannot be waived through SB 684, SB 9.
Great. So, after those questions, we will get another chance after public comment to kind of say what we've learned. But I'd like to invite the, like, to the public comment, invite anybody up who'd like to speak. I certainly, we hope, I hope we have takers, so, welcome.
You've got a taker.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Deana Lundquist. I'm the new CEO for the Chamber of Commerce.
Welcome, nice to meet you. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you, it's been my pleasure. I wanted to speak on behalf of the over 300 business owners in the city of Morro Bay. You've all touched tonight on a need in the city, as well as our county and our, and our state regarding identifying, addressing, housing deficiencies, and the cost of those homes as a priority. Our business owners in Morro Bay agree that this is a pressing need for rebuilding the community with affordable options for our workforce, our young families, our young entrepreneurs, as well as our aging population. We feel this is vital. Morro Bay needs to have clearly defined residential development criteria with minimal subjectivity to allow for consistent interpretation and expedited processes. We feel that this will appeal to not only local developers, but investors as well. And then finally, the chamber is interested in your exploring AB 2011 and how it might apply to 100% affordable residential and mixed-use development in commercial corridors, specifically Morro Bay Boulevard, Main Street, Quintana, and North Main. And then finally, without housing diversity in our community, we can't grow economically nor sustain who we are today. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. And welcome to Morro Bay. Jeff, can I talk you into it?
Betty Winholz again. I have a, a series of just random questions. One of them, we keep throwing out the word affordable. I think there's a definition for that, and I'd appreciate it if you would define what that means. Under the 1211, and we talked about, I think that's the one where you can have as small as six square hundred feet or 1,200 square feet, do the other properties not have, I, I think I heard this, that they still have to meet our standards, so the size of those lots depends on the size of the overall lot, and that would restrict the developer from either putting two or four or eight. So, if that could just be clarified, if I understood that correctly. The term opportunity sites was mentioned several times when the general plan was going through and the zoning ordinance. We were never told that that had a significance, that that meant at some point you can do something special with that, and maybe that's only come after the fact, once it was planned. But I think it's important to let us know the ramifications of what a significant opportunity site is for those, and I think there's just four parcels, and if I'm wrong, what are the other four? Under all these laws, this is another random question, can ADUs, do they have to stay rental, or can they be sold? So, therefore, they become lot splits, and is that where the subdivision part comes in? Can you just kind of talk about that for a minute? And I believe that the Planning Commission, for a while, has wanted to talk about the topic of concessions, is that right? And, and I don't think it's density bonuses, but concessions, and when will that conversation happen so we know how it affects all these laws?
Betty, when you say concessions, what are you thinking?
I, I guess it's like if somebody wants to add three, three units that are low income, do we give them, are those concessions or bonuses? What's the language I'm looking for? It's something that I-
Public benefits?
Yeah, maybe public benefits. It may be public benefits. Thank you for that. I think it's public benefits, that you all haven't defined what public benefits are yet.
That, that's next on our agenda.
Okay, okay.
No, not, not at this meeting, but we're asking for that to come back, like, that's three years ago we asked for that.
Okay, and I think those were my mostly random questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Betty. Anyone else? All right, Jeff.
Good evening, Commissioners, City Staff, and fellow residents. My name is Jeff Echols, a resident of North Morro Bay. I don't know which hat to wear tonight. I'm the CEO of the Housing Trust Fund. We are a nonprofit lender for affordable housing in the county of San Luis Obispo, and we work with all the affordable housing developers within the county. We've done so for the last 21 years. So, I'm very fluent in, in our topic tonight. I did want to reiterate what the prior speaker mentioned. We need to be careful with our language when we speak about affordable housing. Most often, when we talk about affordable housing in this type of forum, we're referring to affordability and not necessarily what we call capital A affordable housing, which is the Community Development Director alluded to, is based upon incomes, and that type of housing, affordable housing, capital A affordable housing, is typically deed-restricted, subsidized housing. The reason that it's subsidized housing and deed-restricted is because those projects simply do not pencil out with some type of subsidy. The Housing Trust Fund in the county, as a nonprofit lender, gives below-market-rate flexible lending as a subsidy. Jurisdictions typically, for instance, Morro Bay offered fee deferrals and other benefits to the Haslow Project on Highway 41. Without those types of subsidies, they just don't work. Typically, those type of properties are deed-restricted for 55 years. You, you had a meaningful discussion earlier that there may be some properties within the city that are coming up upon those limits, those time limits, and at that time could potentially convert to market rate. And one of the things we're looking at from a state, county, and local level is how to maintain or how to preserve those affordable housing units. I would also mention that tonight's discussion relative to state laws, and you may not want to hear this part, I, I'm putting on my citizen's hat right now, is somewhat academic and arbitrary in the fact that those state laws are state laws. The applicant is going to use those state laws to his or her benefit, and then the department has to follow those, those laws. And if, if, if those laws cause, call for a ministerial approval of that particular application, then so be it. So, what I mean by this is that the state laws are just the state laws. So, it's, it's good that we're informed about them, but there's not a whole lot of power that we have in terms of response or variability in response.
Which is kind of the point of tonight, is to understand that discretion is limited, right?
Yes, yes, exactly. So, there's, there's limited discretion, and I think, I think a, a better area of focus, and perhaps a more, again, pardon, but, but a more useful use of our time would be looking at what we call affordable by design or the missing middle. It's, it's the, it's the gap between subsidized housing and entry-level housing. So, when we look at the income levels on the chart that was up earlier for the defined capital A affordable housing, at that 80% of the AMI areas meeting income, if we look at that level up to entry-level buyers, which equates to, believe it or not, about 200, 220% of the AMI area meeting income, that's the space in our housing ladder, in our, in our continuum, housing continuum, that units are just not being built.
Yeah.
And if there's any way that we, as a jurisdiction, as a city, can incentivize the development of those type of units, and speaking practically, in the city of Morro Bay, entry-level house, if you just go on Zillow and look, is, for a 700 square foot house built in the 50s, goes for about $680, $700,000. Your typical buyer's not going to be able to afford that.
So, do stay until we, we look at future agendas, because tonight is focused on state, state bills, state law, but the idea of affordable by design, other sort of ways to do capital A affordability will be handled, we think, in future housing meetings here at the-
Can I ask Jeff a question?
Sure.
Only, just to kind of, you know, shake that mind a little bit before you become a council member. So, SB 9 was challenged and found unconstitutional by a small set of cities. What do you think about that? Did, did you, were you aware of that, Jeff?
Yeah, I think there-
What's your opinion on that finding by the- What's your opinion on that finding by the US, by the state constitution?
I think there have been such a multitude of housing laws that have been passed from Sacramento over the last 10 years, that there will also be a multitude of lawsuits. Some of them will shake out, some of them won't, and that's, that's why, I mean, it's, it's great that we're informed about what's going on, and in a way, as staff expressed, we don't have, because we are largely built, a largely built-out community, we don't have a ton of applicability to a majority of these state laws in our local jurisdiction. So I think our risk is low when it comes to things like that. But yeah, those are going to be challenged by, by larger jurisdictions. I think, I think that's going to be a common occurrence over the next half dozen years or so.
I already have a couple of friends that are doing it, so.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Chris, do we have anybody in the queue?
There are no raised hands.
Okay, your last chance for any comments or questions. Hearing none, I'll close the public comment. Where was that?
Yeah.
Oh, well, we're going to go around again. Yeah, yeah. So let's see if we can try to respond to some of the questions that the public asked. I'll go backwards. Jeff brought up, let's just talk about deed restricted, which is capital A, which is, you know, subject to complex financing. You, you touched on it early. Do you want to respond to the definition? And that's kind of connected to Betty's question, the idea of what is affordable.
So the chart I have up here is the definition for capital A affordable housing, and it's based on income level, the different columns with the income levels correspond to the affordability income levels in our regional housing needs allocation. I think the best way to describe is just kind of picking a cell here. I guess my pointer isn't going to work. But let's say you have a household of three, to, for that household to qualify as income eligible to moderate income level, they can earn a maximum of $135,650 per year as a household. And then the next slide would show if that household spends no more than 30% of their income on housing, what they could afford. So looking at the, the table on the top is rent, so let's say the household of three requires a three-bedroom at a moderate income level, that household could afford up to $3,400 a month. So a rental unit of three bedrooms with a rent of $3,400 per month would be considered affordable at the moderate income level. A three-bedroom house for sale at the moderate income level could sell for up to $506,000 and be considered affordable. So that's the capital A affordable housing. That is, of course, as you know, Mr. Echols stated, there is a need all the way up the, the housing ladder, and there's, especially at that missing middle area for, for housing, for families that earn more than these income limits but still are having a hard time finding housing to, to purchase or rent at affordable prices. The significance and importance of the capital A affordable housing, though, is that it corresponds to our arena in the, the housing element, and the housing element really is the city's overarching housing policy roadmap and, and goal.
So, Airlin, if you could respond to Betty's question, she was asking about community benefits, and I would like you to give an offering, when is that even applicable? There are certain kind of contracts with developers, like a development agreement, where community benefits are applicable. I think community benefits might be applicable on the Harbor, Harbor Walk, and the Embarcadero. Typically, community benefits are not arbitrary. There needs to be a specific condition for that. Could you explain that?
Yeah, so it is a, a complex and involved discussion. Trying to just provide a more succinct, you know, response, you're correct. So the city before the zoning code update had a plan development overlay, and that plan development overlay allowed for waivers of certain zoning standards, such as height and, and setbacks, when findings of public benefit could be made. With the comprehensive zoning code update taking effect in March of this year, that, the PD overlay essentially went away, so public benefits is really no longer have a relevant discussion in that context. However, the waterfront master plan still has provisions that allows for height exceptions in situations where there's a finding of, of public benefit.
So there, they're linked.
There's still an opening there for height exceptions on, on the waterfront. And to your other point, that for much larger development projects, I mean, the Vista Project, I'm just going to use it as an example, where they're asking to change the zoning, to change land use designation, that's a very large development project, that opens the doors to negotiation and discussion on a community benefits agreement. But just a smaller, typical, you know, day-to-day type of development project, we normally wouldn't be discussing a community benefits agreement.
And then to apply that to the state, you know, state laws, there is no discretion, you know, so discretion around community benefits is probably not an option.
Certainly under, yeah, for processing a, a development project under one of these state laws that we've been discussing tonight, it'd be a ministerial process, and community benefits would not be part of the discussion.
Betty brought on ADUs, can they be sold?
So I, I think Ms. Winholz was alluding to another state law that wasn't discussed in our report tonight that authorizes local agencies to adopt an ordinance to allow for essentially a subdivision to sell off an ADU separate from the primary house. That's not mandatory, that's really an authorizing law. If the city wanted to adopt an ordinance to allow for subdivisions to sell off ADUs, then that would be permitted under this, this state law, but that is not currently something that's under consideration for Morro Bay.
And what would be, let's say, even if it was, what would the process be? Do you, how do you, do you divide the land? I don't know.
We haven't really done the research to be able to accurately-
And can I give you an FYI? San Jose was the first city to authorize this, and they did what you, what you're thinking about doing if you want to go there. So San Jose was the first city in the state of California to authorize ADUs to be sold as different parcels, so just, that's for your information. I don't know if any other cities have done it, but San Jose has.
Opportunity sites. Can you, that was one of Betty's questions. What advantages does an opportunity site have? And if you could be specific here in Morro Bay, that would be helpful.
I'll start off, and I might have Camerons Susanna jump in to correct me or add to it. So we talked about the RENA sites inventory in our housing element, and particularly SB 684 has some language that ties back into a housing element sites inventory. For example, if someone's proposing a 684 project on a site that was identified in our housing element to contribute towards low-income RENA, in order for that project to be processed under 684, they would have to provide as many low-income units as envisioned in the housing element to be provided on that site, otherwise it couldn't be processed under 684. But, okay, I'm getting heads nodding.
So that's more of a restriction, then, yeah?
Exactly.
Yeah. Are there advantages? Like, what are the development advantages around an opportunity site?
Yeah, I, again, I think you hit the nail on the head, that really it's a restriction, not an advantage.
Okay, clear. I did want to say, it was great to hear from the Chamber of Commerce, your encouragement about workforce, senior housing, affordable, to Jeff's point, that this commission really does want to look at affordable by design, and roughly there are 14 different kinds of affordable housing. And so how do we begin to see, match our opportunities, our incentives? And I applaud what the chamber had to say, so, you know, thank you for that input. Staff, did you want to respond to any of those comments?
I don't have any specific responses. I mean, I will just maybe put a plug in for the downtown design district work that we have done. We met with the DDD Downtown Design District Subcommittee, I think it was August 29th, and put together some recommendations on how workforce housing and lowercase a affordable housing, affordable by design housing, might be able to be incorporated in the downtown, potentially through a form-based code, and we plan to present those recommendations to the, the public at upcoming public forum, but the date hasn't been quite set for that yet.
Yeah, thank you. With that, I think, were there any questions that we missed, Commissioners, from the, from the public? Joe?
I, I seem to recall that with respect to accessory dwelling units, I don't know if it was a proposed Sacramento law, or it's actually a law, that allows for a condominium arrangement to exist between the main, main house and the accessory dwelling unit. Am I, am I creating a fiction, or does something exist?
No, that, that's the same law we were referring to regarding subdivisions, so condominium map could be a, a form of subdivision, allowing the ADU to be sold separate from the main house.
Which does not exist in Morro Bay and is-
Correct.
Not being considered.
Right, well, I'd, I'd like to suggest that we, we researched that and consider it, because it strikes me, that might be an opportunity for a first-time buyer to actually step into the, to the real estate market, and, and it would provide a niche that probably doesn't exist right now, that someone could buy a one- or two-bedroom home for, you know, $500,000 or less, if they were willing to abide as a condominium arrangement.
Got it. Well, Commissioners, if there's no other questions for staff, I would like to get your comments, steps forward, opportunities, what you heard tonight. Can we start with you, Eric?
You know, if you read the paper a lot, or the internet, I guess, these days, lately we've noticed some articles about what's happening in Cayucas, and what's happening in some other towns, about how it's, it's primarily become vacation rentals, or it's become secondary or tertiary or quaternary homes for very wealthy folks, and that's something that Morro Bay also has to contend with. And I guess if we could find a way to lessen the impacts of these homes that are only used for a month a year, of which there's some percentage in this town, and, and somehow incentivize the new subdivision regs, if it's possible, to, to encourage, and one form of residency, permanent versus another form, temporary, I would really, and that's why I brought up the vacation rental thing a little bit, for the same reason, slightly different, it's just I think that we are under a lot of pressure from a lot of very wealthy people all around the world, and that's a good thing, but it, it's a bad thing if you're trying to buy a house in this town.
And those vacation rentals do take a, a, a house out of the market?
Yeah, it's not just the vacation rentals I'm talking about right now, but it's the secondary homes.
Yeah.
And there should be, I think, some way to, to discern between a primary home and a secondary home, and, and within our tax code or within something, and I know people are going to hate me for saying that.
So as we look at topics that we might do in future housing issues, that would be one you're suggesting.
Somehow to keep the, the inventory of our, limited stock to, to the people who live and work in this community most of the time.
Other comments, Eric?
No.
Mike?
I'll just come back to what I asked at the beginning, which is, are developers more likely to come to Morro Bay, given the new SLU of laws and what's coming on the books, or are they less likely to come to Morro Bay? Any developer for any type of housing, regular housing, affordable housing, single, I wouldn't want to say tiny homes, anything. Are there any, are they likely to come here versus two years ago, based upon all of these laws that have passed? I, I want, I'm doing an experiment. Somebody said, go to your town and see if developers want to, want us to come.
I think a big theme of our discussion tonight has been that a lot of the state laws, you could help certain developers in certain situations, but in general have pretty limited applicability, and given our geography and the fact that the city's mostly built out, so it's really difficult to, to be able to predict that.
How about affordable homes? Is there any, we've already talked about ADUs, possibly selling them separately, like other places are doing now to make it happen. How about affordable housing in Morro Bay? Specifically affordable housing. Are there any opportunities for affordable housing?
You're talking-
More likely than there were two years ago.
You're talking about deed restricted.
Yeah, whatever, yeah.
Well, not whatever.
Yeah.
Deed restricted.
Yeah, any type of affordable housing, based upon the new laws that have passed. Because, you know, I'm, I'm working with a group of people who are trying to figure out whether these laws will apply and how successful they will be, so I'm asking these questions for a reason.
So I'll use ADUs as an example, again, and an ADU is actually an example of lowercase affordable housing, because they're not necessarily deed restricted, but we do have some data to show that they tend to be affordable, and there have been, you know, ADU laws that make it easier for developers to propose ADUs, so there's-
Thank you.
Asia?
Yeah, thanks, I appreciate this discussion. There's a few things that we're talking about and trying to noodle through and conceptualize, and I'm hearing a couple things, thinking about opportunity sites, how do we maximize building development, housing development on opportunity sites? That's what I'm thinking about. How do we help locals, or not necessarily exact locals, but people who need lower-end capital A affordable housing access those new developments? And what kind of policies can the city enact to help those things happen? What kind of policies might we explore to help ADUs be sold as condos, or lot splits be sold and develop max? I'm thinking about, how can we use all these little things to maximize housing development? And as we go through the series of housing and talking more about housing over the next couple weeks, those are things that would be great to be on the agenda, because I think, even though these state laws are like limited, and in Morro Bay, the like spectrum of state laws and ideas that people are coming up with right now might give us opportunities to think through, okay, what kind of like local policy could we, I know it's not our job to create policy here, but maybe what kind of things could we learn more about?
Could be incentive, incentivizations?
Incentivized, yeah.
That kind of thing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's just what I'm-
Joe?
Well, I, I'm certainly in favor of, of the things that this community can do, as in giving more ministerial discretion to sort of speed things along, and, and perhaps, as I mentioned earlier, the condominium use of the accessory dwelling units might also help to provide some sort of market-based affordable housing. However, you know, Morro Bay's great attribute and benefit is its proximity to the Pacific Ocean, and, and I think it's increasingly becoming aware to the wealth of Silicon Valley and Southern California that they, people can take their wealth here and enjoy the ocean where they might not be able to enjoy it in their locations in the south or the north. So I'm less than optimistic that we're going to meaningfully solve our affordable housing problem here in Morro Bay, which is why I hope that we could take a, a county-wide or a regional-wide approach, because so often, when urban areas talk about the problem of affordable housing, they're talking about urban areas that are an enormous area. I, you know, I'm from Southern California, and I, and, you know, the distance is from Newport Beach to Calabasas is probably 80 or 90 miles, but there are, there is opportunities, affordable properties, which are still in very easy commuting distance of Morro Bay, which might go a long way towards solving the often-mentioned problem of, of work housing, things like that. So we, we should think about that kind of creatively, maybe we can-
So Joe, the Slocog Council of Governments has, that part of RENA is doing exactly that. The way, the way that RENA is established is by looking at the commuting patterns of the county, and the unincorporated and incorporated cities, as well as the housing in those cities, and then the jobs in those cities, and the water supplies in those cities, as well as other constraints, and then taking those commuter miles and looking at where the jobs, like for instance, Morro Bay has two houses for every job, and cities like San Luis Obispo has a lot less. They have a lot, they have, I don't know the number exactly, so I'm- They have a lot, they have, I don't know the number exactly, so I'm just paraphrasing, but let's say they have 31,000 jobs and 21,000 houses, and they also have a huge school. And, and so they have, all those differential factors are why a city like Morro Bay, I was part of this, the C-TAC at the SlowCog, which is a committee that talked about the regional transportation needs, as how they affected RENA. And the, the, San Luizo, in 2015, I think it was plus or minus 3,000 houses were allocated through RENA to be, they needed to zone for 3,000 additional houses, whereas Morro Bay, because we have very little, not as much need, let's say, it was only allocated 300 and something houses through the RENA process. So, the, the idea is to fi- find where the, the jobs are and put more houses there, and where the jobs aren't, it's not as important. Some, some communities like Cambria are limited so much by their water supplies that it's almost impossible, but they do get some little RENA numbers, because they have the ability for super-low income here and there projects. I think I'm, we have one of the hefees in this whole process sitting over here, who knows 10 times more than me. Arlen?
I think that was very well explained, Eric, so, or Commissioner Meyer. Thank you.
Commissioners, it's 7:30, we've done well. I really, I learned a lot, which is always good, and I think becoming familiar because of the magnitude of what these state bills represent is clever and smart, but it's also an opportunity for us to sort of understand, not only how we can participate county-wide, regionally, but is there a chance for local planning imagination, as Asia was talking about, to really create unique opportunities here for affordability? Whether it's Big A, where you find ways to provide land to incentivize development, or whether it's Little A, where you find ways to manage parking, height, form-based zoning codes that allow for an increased density. These are things that actually locally, we might be, you know, more fluid, more able to implement. So the affordable-by-design issue that Jeff brought up, I mean, that's a study that came out of Slow, and it's really smart, but if we could find ways to apply it here, I think it might actually be implemented. And that would not only help our workforce, as, you know, the Chamber brought up, but that would help our seniors, because we could get, you know, smaller units that were affordable, that actually could be transformative. So for me, this was a provocative discussion, not just about the state law, but about, let's call it, what affordable housing might be, and how it's complicated with issues like parking, zoning, height, and, you know, the ease of pooling permits. So I think we're gonna talk about it a little bit later in upcoming things. We would like to do further opportunities like that, this, to focus on housing issues, you know, like affordable-by-design, like ADUs.
Ungulate core zoning.
Yeah, and about like, you know, just vacancy rates and second homes. I mean, it's, it's an issue that other cities are now taking on. There's a ballot measure coming up, I think it's in Tahoe, where they're looking at questioning and creating enforcement around penalties for vacant houses. So, not that we wanna do any of that, I think what it points to the fact is that this is a real crisis statewide, and we're not gonna solve it, but I like the fact that we can look at it locally, with, with some authorship. I think that's a good thing. So, any final words from anybody? Arlen, can I ask staff for a final word, and we'll close out the night?
My final word is I've just really appreciated this discussion and the, the public input. I have spent a good part of my career focused on, on housing policy, so I was really excited to give this presentation, and again, really appreciate the input and look forward to the continued discussion. Like I mentioned earlier, and kinda to your point, Chair Rocheon, about more creative ideas, I think the downtown design districts work as a good launching-off point for those discussions, and I think the rest of the Commission will have opportunities to be involved in that.
Yeah, and can I ask you a question, Arlen, since we're gonna close out the meeting? This will be going to council, right? Have you given this presentation regarding all the new laws and coming laws and all this stuff to council yet?
So, no, this, this request was specifically for a, a study session with the Planning Commission. We will be presenting our general plan progress report to the City Council on November 12th, which could create a forum for some input on, on housing policy from the council and public.
Nice. Let me thank for everybody who came tonight, thank you, folks. Thank you, Arlen, Kim, Susanna. Commissioners, thanks.
Oh, I had a
We're not
Stone, oh, okay, go ahead.
We're just gonna get off of this, this, this item. So with that, unfinished business?
Yes. Arlen, you've probably had a chance to look at the Community Public Benefits Memo that's been sitting out there for, going on three years now, so. That was for the purpose of larger projects, some of these may be negligible now because of the laws, but one of them, one of the reasons we wanted to get this on paper was because of Vistra. So, you know, we wanted to try to hash out some, you know, like guidelines, or that we could use, as well as the City Council ones that ever got there. So will we be getting that memo presentation? That's what I'm asking you, because it was promised to us a year ago by the last director, the presentation. That's not you, that's the last director. He promised to do that a year ago. Joe's on the subcommittee, I'm on the subcommittee. And we gotta, you know, Sean Green is on the subcommittee.
Mike's talking about the community benefit
Yeah.
Effort.
He's seen, he's, he's seen the memo. So will that be coming to us? Anytime?
So that is on the list, along with this, this housing update. So we brought, we brought the housing update, you know, we understand public benefits has been discussed for quite some time, and it's important to the Commission, and we do intend to bring a public benefits discussion. I was able to touch on it a little bit this evening, but it is, it's, it's on our list to come to the Commission with that, that memo and discussion.
Nice. Others, unfinished business? Hearing none. Planning Commission comments, future agenda items? We are talking about doing the idea of these public workshops that are topic-focused. Several topics came up here around housing. Actually, Asia and I are on a subcommittee that was formed at least a year ago, and so we met recently to look at what we might bring to Arlen and discuss in terms of future topics. It also has the advantage of keeping us busy. If we have the opportunity, you know, not with so many projects, we can actually do more long-range planning considerations, and it keeps us current. So that's maybe the one thing I would offer. Asia, did you wanna add anything to that housing agenda?
Um, no, just that we covered, or a lot of topics we brought up tonight are ones that we'd like to dig into, things around affordable-by-design, financing for housing, and things like that. So excited to dig into that.
Great, thank you. Others, future agenda items? Eric?
I'll just pitch in for historic preservation ordinance.
Thank you.
We need the City Council hint, hint, to pitch that as a priority, or it won't happen. Thanks.
And one other thing, I just wanted to thank the Chamber, the new Chamber manager for coming tonight, and you may wanna look at someplace like San Jose, I mean, they're huge, but they've got a lot of innovative approaches to doing any kind of housing, including tiny homes. We never got to that. They'll build them as small or as big as you want, and they'll get around the state laws, and they'll apply them, but they'll do it right. So I'm just telling our Chamber, don't give up on it. Thanks.
Commissioners, thank you. Community Development Director, comments?
So I, I do have a pretty long list of comments, so I'll go ahead and
Please.
Go down my list. So I wanna start off with some staffing updates. So Community Development Department has a couple new key staff members I wanted to announce. So we have a new assistant planner named Eric Valentine. He's a Cal Poly graduate, and he previously worked for the city of College Park, actually, in the state of Maryland, but is from California, and again, graduated from Cal Poly, and has moved back to Central Coast, and we're very happy to, to have him on the team. We also have
If I could just add with Eric, I did get to meet him, he's wonderful, so
He is.
Thank you, yeah.
We also have a, a wonderful planning intern named Lee Ackerman. They are undergraduate student at Cal Poly City and Regional Planning Program, and, you know, one thing I've learned here in Morro Bay is that we really, really utilize our interns in the Community Development Department. They have a direct interaction assisting the public with permits on a daily basis. Next, I wanted to discuss a little bit more, you know, why have Planning Commission meetings been canceled? I don't have too much to add beyond what I said earlier, it's mostly because the zoning code is successful in streamlining the process for these smaller permits. Our CDP applications have slowed down a little bit, that's also part of it, but it's mostly just we're able to approve projects administratively, instead of bringing them all to the Planning Commission now. Next update is very exciting. I want to announce that the Coastal Commission last Wednesday approved the city's application for a $750,000 grant for the waterfront master plan update. So that's very exciting news.
Big deal, yeah.
So, this, I, I view as the, kind of, the, the third piece to the kinda comprehensive updating of the, the city code, with the, you know, Plan Morro Bay's complete, zone code update is complete, now waterfront master plan is the next major piece of updating the city's vision for, for growth and development. So that's gonna be a very exciting process. It will include establishing a waterfront master plan advisory committee. So again, we just got the grant, and we're very, at the very early stages of talking about what the process is gonna look like and how that committee will be formed, but stay tuned on that. I also had an opportunity earlier to plug our downtown design district subcommittee, we had a successful meeting back in August with a recommendation that we're gonna present at a public forum, and more to come on that. Panorama subdivision, 46 lot subdivision, one of the larger development projects going on in the city. We have a very important meeting scheduled here in the Vets Hall this Thursday at 5:30 PM. It is the scoping meeting for the environmental impact report. The purpose of this scoping meeting really is for staff and our EIR consultant to listen to the public on the key environmental concerns that need to be addressed in the environmental impact report from the public perspective. So I look forward to that, that meeting and hearing from the public.
Can I ask you, Arlen, would that be conducted as a town hall, or is it gonna be tables?
It will be conducted similar to a, a town hall in that it's not going to be like a, a formal, structured, you know, like a planning commission meeting. We are gonna have, I'll, I'll open up the meeting, and then our EIR consultant will talk about the EIR process, and types of comments that are really helpful for them to use when they, you know, scope the EIR and, and prepare the, the draft.
And the public will have an opportunity to speak at that publicly?
That's the point. The point of the meeting really is for the public to speak. We just give enough information about the project so the public can speak and let us know what they think the EIR should focus on.
Yeah, and I think based on what I read, it's a virtual, as well.
No, so it is all in person here at the Vets Next update, 781 Market Avenue. So we brought a discussion to council about the requests for qualifications. So council has directed a new RFQ process to be initiated, to find a developer, to develop the Market Plaza properties. And we don't have a date quite set yet, but we'll be coming back to council with a draft request for qualifications for council to review and take action on.
Do you have an idea how that process will be conducted regarding Market Avenue?
I think that's still, you know, pending direction from, from council.
Thank you.
I wanted to very briefly, you know, give an update on the, the Vistra best project. Really, my, my update is just to let the Commission know that on September 24th, I gave a rather detailed update to the City Council on the, the process for, you know, the continued processing of the best application. One of the, you know, key points I made in that presentation is that the August 2nd Coastal Commission staff letter essentially directed the city to not concurrently process the local coastal program amendment and CDP, but instead to segment those two components, and first process the local coastal program amendment, and then, you know, if and when that's approved by the council and the Coastal Commission, then follow that up with the processing of the coastal development permit application. So that segmented process does add time to the process. The, the very rough tentative timeline I presented to council in September was the LCP amendment could be going to, you know, the first hearing before Planning Commission in March or April of next year. Since that presentation, we haven't made as much, for, for various reasons, the project hasn't made a lot of progress. We're still trying to work with the Coastal Commission to better understand some of their comments on development constraints for the property. So kinda given the current timing on that, we're looking probably more at a, the soonest that the best project could be before the Planning Commission is probably summer 2025.
And when you say working with Coastal Commission, what does that actually mean?
Sure, so we did have a meeting with Coastal Commission staff and Vistra to start to discuss some of their comments, and the most, you know, significant comments are related to unmapped ESHA on the best site, as well as shoreline, armarine, and, and coastal hazards. Where that was left off with Coastal Commission staff and Vistra is we need to schedule a, a site visit for staff, Vistra, biologists to come out on the site and further discuss some of those, those concerns, and what they could mean for the future of the project, and that meeting hasn't been scheduled yet. Next, short-term rental ordinance implementation. So I mentioned, there's, it's really a, I would say, two-part process. So the first part is we have identified properties in Morro Bay that are advertising on online hosting platforms, and we've compared that to our list of permitted short-term rentals, and beginning November 4th, we're going to send letters to any non-compliant short-term rental, saying that they would need to either get their required permits, or cease operation, or they're subject to fines and paying back transient occupancy tax. So that's the first part, is identifying and, you know, basically initiating enforcement on unpermitted short-term rentals. The second part is what I mentioned earlier on, and that is starting the annual renewal process for all the permitted short-term rentals beginning January 1st.
And, and that would be for, say, a single-home townhouses, condos? Could that be for any of that stuff? Because I'm familiar with the townhouse development, that has a couple of those. Would that apply to them, too?
Yeah, so it applies to all short-term rentals.
Any type of home, housing, that's what I meant.
Any type of short-term
Okay.
Yeah, less than 30-day rental.
Thank you.
I'm just curious, Mr., what are the, what are the monetary, sure, punishments for violating the short-term vacation ordinance?
So our zoning code allows us to issue citations of, of up to $500 per day.
Wow.
So, next, it's just upcoming agenda items. So because our next regularly-scheduled Planning Commission meeting fell on Election Day, November 5th, we are going to hold instead of special, Planning Commission meeting special because it's not regularly scheduled, on October 29th, and we have, the Bayside Landing Conditional Use Permit is scheduled for that meeting date, and we also have a Planning Commission scheduled for November 19th, and we have at least one project ready for the November 19th meeting.
I'm sorry, I missed what you said about the, which, what, what is coming on the 29th?
So 29th is the Bayside Landing Conditional Use Permit on Embarcadero. And then November 19th, we'll also have a Planning Commission meeting with one project on the agenda.
Okay.
And then my, my, my final update, and I also had the opportunity to mention this earlier, that we are going to present our general plan progress report to the City Council on November 12th. And that's a requirement under state law to present an annual general plan progress report to the legislative body of the local agency. And that concludes my director updates.
So, Arlen, before I say thank you, how long have you been with us now, in the city of Morro Bay?
About three and a half months.
Yeah. I wanna tell you, this was an impressive list. I wanna say thank you for your energy and your focus. This is a Commission that loves to hear this sort of thing. You talked about the waterfront master plan, which is, $750,000 is a giant thing. Thank you for that. You talked about the 3D meeting we're going to have, the public meeting. That's the result of over a year of effort. Thank you for bringing that forward. I'm very excited about the new RFQ proposal for, you know, Market Avenue, thank you for that. And the Vistra issue, you know, was critical, of course, to, to the city. But mainly, thank you for your energy. I think, Commissioners, we, we really do appreciate it.
I, I really appreciate that, Chair Rocheon, and I realize I forgot to mention another I really appreciate that, Chair Rocheon, and I realize I forgot to mention another very important staffing-related update, and the city has a new permanent planning division manager, Kim Fowler.
Ah.
As you saw from her, you know, answering questions and performance this evening, she is very sharp, very experienced. Like, really couldn't ask for a better planning manager to round out our team, and so I'm very excited that she accepted the, the permanent role.
So I'll second-
Welcome, yeah.
Yeah, I'll second the chair on congratulating you on your judgment. You made a very good decision. Thank you.
Anyhow, a big thank you to staff. The, the different atmosphere is welcome.
Yeah.
And I would like to close it with Asia. Do you have any sort of inspiring words for us? Tell us about your trip to Puerto Rico.
Just don't fly to Puerto Rico from San Luis Obispo. You'll never get there. It wasn't a vacation, it was a work trip.
During, during the hurricane.
During the hurricane. So don't do that. If you have any other travel needs, just talk to me. I'm doing all of it wrong. So, no, nothing, nothing else to close with except-
I remember our book club, our book-
I know, I have a list of books I would really like us to read.
We'll get back to it.
Yeah, we can get back to it, but just to say, it's been kind of good to have a little bit of a break for the summer, having kids home and all sorts of activities, but I'm really excited to dig into, start doing more stuff in town.
Asia, thank you. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Sure, I'll second that.
Thanks, everybody, very much.